And Councilor Hughes, our current president, is on the road here and I, as a result, I've got the honor of leading tonight as well too. So we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance if you would join me.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we get the roll call, please? All right, Councilor Hughes?
Here.
Councilor Lickie?
Here.
Councilor McElroy?
Here.
Councilor Prokop?
Here.
Councilor Strobel?
Here.
Councilor Ten Bush?
Here.
Mayor Drake Wine Saps? All right, thank you. And I do have one citizen request here. Brent Dodgwell?
Good evening. I am Brent Dodgwell.
Yep.
So I am the past president of Estacada Chamber of Commerce and I want to thank you again for your service to our community. And I want to thank you as well for the partnership that the city has had with the Chamber of Commerce. I think that's one of the things that has made Estacada very unique. Good partnerships, good people working together, not just with the city and the chamber, but the city and the school and the school and the chamber. Appreciate Council Strobel and Council Hughes being at the last Chamber of Commerce lunch forum that we had at the school district. So all that to say thank you for the partnership. Last time was before you, I told you we'd be selecting a new president, so I'm pleased to have the new president standing next to me. You all know Connie Redman because she's involved in many things around the community here. And what I love about Connie is she knows how to work with people. And again, I'm hoping that as she steps into the role of president, they'll continue to be a good partnership with the city. And I know she'll be available to you if you guys all have any questions, just direct to her personally. So I say thank you for the partnership and look forward to that continued partnership with Connie. One last thing before I step down. I'll be stepping off the Chamber of Commerce board, but I'll still be somewhat connected because there's some exciting partnerships that are developing with the chamber and the Forest Service, the District Ranger. We've had some really good conversations. They're excited to have another location back in Estacada. And we're on the verge of doing something really great to actually have a visitor center that has the Chamber of Commerce and the US Forest Service in a very visible place. So we're excited about that. And so I'll be part of the chamber, just kind of working on that on the side, but Connie will be handling the reins. So thank you very much.
Can I just ask, Brent, how long have you been president of the chamber?
Well, I, I was president for two years and then Michelle Jones stepped in and then she stepped away, so I stepped back in. So it was about three years that I was the president.
Well, thank you, Brent, for serving on that for the past few years here, getting us through the pandemic and all that too. And we thank you for that. And Connie, welcome. We look forward to working with you as well, too. All right, thank you. This brings us, well, we're, we're going to come into the consent agenda, but right after the consent agenda, we've got our city attorney, Peter Watts, here too. He is here to talk about item 5B, discussion of advertising policy. So we'd like to bump that up right after this consent agenda and right before department and committee reports, just to accommodate his time here. So with that, we come up to the consent agenda. Has everyone had a chance to review that? Got to get a motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, passes. Thank you. And with that, we will move into council business and move the discussion of advertising policy up here.
So this is, this has come up on a couple of different things. And so I told your staff, there's no right answer. The right answer is whatever the city council thinks is the right answer. But we should probably raise the issue because advertising, the way that, the way that using city resources, that advertising happening is changing a bit. So in the past, the advertising was for the downtown area or other areas of the city, and it wasn't necessarily business specific. Except that if there was a festival or something like that and certain businesses were sponsoring it, those businesses might be, you know, identified as the gold sponsor, the silver sponsor, whatever it is. And there's been some that, that, the same thing with the cities kind of billboard is that we had people that could utilize it, like the school district in addition to the city, but for-profit businesses not. And the, the reason we have structured it like that is because kind of one, one best practice is that people don't like it when cities are picking winners and losers. If we're going, sometimes people think it's, it can be unfair depending on how the programs run. And it can turn into kind of a wedge issue for folks if they, they say, well, what city, why are you doing, why are you supporting this but not supporting that? So by, by not allowing private businesses to advertise by keeping it, you know, school district, nonprofit festivals, things of that nature, that just benefited the community at large. We, we were kind of in, trying to insulate the, the city from those kind of how do we create, how do we create a system that allows all businesses to fairly participate in it? I think some of the, some of the groups are looking at that advertising policy and have requested that local businesses be spotlighted. And I've seen that happen in other jurisdictions. There's nothing wrong with that. That just would be a change from existing policy. And I told Melanie it would be a good idea to have a conversation with the council and kind of get consensus around that. And then to the extent that council is interested in doing that in, in the promotion of individual businesses. And, and when I say that, I mean, I don't mean like market sectors, like not like, you know, February is restaurant month in Estacada where we support all of our local restaurants. Here's a listing of our local restaurants. You know, ask them if they have any specials during Restaurant Appreciation Month. I mean, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about eat at this restaurant. And so if that's the, that's, I think there's some interest from various committees about spotlighting or highlighting different private businesses. Told Melanie it would be a good idea to check in with council and see if that's a council idea too. And if so, how can we create these parameters for fairness? Yeah.
I, I think it's, it's a good idea to keep it as nonprofits and that's it because like you said, it opens up a can of worms. You start getting into private businesses and the city's not here. We, to promote private businesses, we're here for the general welfare of the people. There's groups like the Chamber of Commerce and things that are there for the businesses. I think, you know, basically we kind of stay in our lane. And so I think nonprofits make the best sense to me.
I think it'll just create a huge mess with people because if you open it up to one business, you're not gonna, you're gonna be put in a bad spot. You have to open it up to every single business in the city. And then you get people flooding Melanie with phone calls, asking, requesting her time on a, on a billboard or a digital board. And I just think that would be a nightmare. I think it's a horrible idea.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm kind of in, in agreement. I think that it should still, it should just be, you know, local nonprofits. I, I mean, I don't want to create a law, a traffic jam over here because somebody's waiting for something to come up on the reader board while they're stopped at the stop sign. You know, I can, I can usually get through the three, two or three things that come up in the morning with sitting there waiting for cars to go by. But, you know, and then also the you know, we'd have to go, we'd have to find that clear and objective criteria and it'd just be, I think, I think it would be messy. So.
Thank you. Council Hughes, you have your hand up.
I just wanted to chime in and say that I too am in agreement with Councilor Lickie and McElroy and Councilor Ten Bush. I'm, I think it's a horrible idea that we've singled out businesses. And again, this is, you know, agreed that it's something that the chamber, that's the chamber's job. So if people want to get involved with the Chamber of Commerce and put their business there, that's, that's for the chamber to advertise and definitely feel more just sticking with the nonprofits.
Can I muddy the water just a little bit with an example? Okay, so for one, the one situation that has been coming up lately is our downtown Estacada Commission promotes downtown Estacada, their Main Street organization. And they are, they are very interested in promoting individual businesses, 10% off here at this store or just this store is open. And I, I suppose that they've been maybe doing that for a while, but it just recently came to my attention. And I agree that it would have to be the, there'd have to be clear criteria on how, you know, which businesses get to do that. And so that's, that's really what brought this up. And, and they are, they do promotions, they have a promotions committee in the Main Street organization. But it is, my understanding of it was to promote the downtown district, to promote downtown in general. To still do, you know, if there's events downtown, help promote those. And so that's kind of where this is coming from. It's not just the reader board and the banners. It's also one of our commissions who wants to promote businesses. And that was concerning me. So I don't know if you want to have other questions or Peter way more on that.
Right. I mean, if there's a, if there's a, if there's a festival or something like that and those happen, then, you know, that's benefiting a lot of businesses and it's also gives the community to do some, something else. So I, I put that in a different category. My concern is to the extent that it's eat at wherever, then how do we make sure that we're being responsive to all the businesses? And frankly, draft, I was, it seems like we have consensus from council, but drafting that sort of program that's easy for people to understand and also fair to them would be really difficult, frankly.
Council Mickey?
And as far as like the, the DEC that has Estacada Commission doing that, I think it would be wise to advise them that we do have limitations on what we can and can't do. And that they, if they want to advise, they want to advertise the event, but not this particular business. That keeps us in that, I think that green area. Or if they're trying to go for the business particularly, that might still kind of start to cross over a little bit. But we have places they can direct businesses to in town if they'd like to promote them. Maybe they can partner with the, with the Chamber of Commerce newspaper, something like that. Where if they want to promote, they can, they might be able to either A, they can use a budgetary item or something that pays for it or more likely probably just direct them to those locations. And maybe as a partner with the city being directed there, they'll give them a discount for the advertising or something. Or, or along those lines, something where we're not specifically favoring one business over the other. But they're being directed outward to someone who can do that.
Thank you.
And, and my thoughts are much in line with, with everyone else's. So tonight, or we probably just need general consensus. And I think you've got that from us now. So anything?
So we'll stick with the policy as it is. And yeah, and I'll have a discussion with the downtown Estacada Commission on options, ways they can do promotions without highlighting specific businesses. Unless like they're sponsoring an event or like Peter said, they, or they won an award. In those cases, we probably would mention that. Or when we're doing downtown Main Street, we might say these businesses on Main Street are open since we've decimated their street. But other, but just a general advertising, I'm hearing that, well, stay away from that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Peter.
From here, we will bump back up to number four and do our department and committee reports. When, and this is where we're having folks quarterly.
Right, correct.
Okay.
All right. We should have several committees here. I see you go, just go across the list.
Okay.
On the agenda?
Parks and Rec Commission is our first one up.
Logan. So we did our third annual Candy cane hunt over the Christmas break and had 21 children participate in that and give, give, gave out Yotri gift cards and got them all through the town. So that was one of the things we've done for a while that seems to be pretty well received. Our next event is the Sprint Into Spring. So this will be our second event for the Sprint Into Spring. Maybe it's the third. I actually kind of lost track. But that will be over at the Campinella Park and it's just a children's run as well as an adult longer run. So the last few years, we've had good response to that. So we're looking forward to that as well. So thanks for your support. I don't know if anybody has any questions for, I guess I should say I'm terming out in March. And so at this next meeting, which is I think it's this week, we will be selecting new president that will carry on after I exit.
Wow, well.
So you're not reapplying for? I am not right at this point, yes.
Do, do we know about when the Sprint Into Spring is going to be? Did you say I?
It's in April. And I think we've set the date, but I apologize. I don't have that in front of you.
Great. Looking forward to it. I think, is that, I think I had the honor of participating a year ago and
Yeah.
Barely made it to the end.
We're hoping that every city council will be there.
Right. There's the challenge.
With the kids, whatever.
Do you have ambulances present?
Yeah.
Jared?
Since it sounds like you're stepping away from all of your boards and commissions, I just want to personally thank you for all that you've done for Estacada and will still continue to do behind the scenes, I'm sure. All you've done for Estacada in this community, it's really appreciated by, you know, a, anyone that knows you. So appreciate you and thank you for your service.
Thank you. You're welcome. And I'm going to do something wrong and comment on what you guys just talked about, about the advertising. So I'm right now briefly putting on my Chamber of Commerce hat, just going to say the DEC, when you get their newsletter, they do specifically advertise downtown businesses specifically. So I'm not, I'm not saying that as any sort of complaint. So as you get their newsletter, just know that. And I was kind of waiting until somebody who's not in downtown mentioning a complaint that why is the city promoting only the downtown businesses and not all the businesses in town? So that might be a challenge to work through. We've also had people tell us, because I've heard you say that's the Chamber of Commerce's job, say, why do we need to be a part of the Chamber of Commerce because the city is promoting our business? So that's a bit of a, something to work through. So please don't take that as like a big complaint from the Chamber of Commerce. It's just something I noticed as we try to promote the businesses. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
It's go, it's, it's going great. Going great, Bill. I'll have to give you, I'll call you, give you update.
All right, next we've got, thank you again, Brent. Next we've got the Downtown Estacada Commission.
Is anybody here with the DEC? No, I don't see Hannah.
All right.
In the attendees.
Come on up.
Brian and Nancy Horton. Okay. Oh, Connie, will you give us a report for DEC? Okay.
Hi, Connie Redman, Downtown Estacada Commission. Gosh, what are we doing? We've, we've got, we're still trying to recruit a few members. So if you know of anybody that wants to be involved, of course, help us with that. We're looking at Bennett Johnson has been doing an incredible job on putting out a newsletter, both electronically and with the paper. She's got a way for words and it's just, I hope you get a chance to go to the DEC website and look at her. We're talking about what we do and what's going on. We're at the beginning stages of talking about doing an Oktoberfest this year. We're not going to do one court. We haven't done one for a couple of years and that's mainly because we couldn't get any, any vendors, any wine vendors to do it. So we're going to try October, no, September 23rd for Oktoberfest. Time Traveler's Brewery is going to be the main beer person and all the meats, like the brats and the sausages. So we're just starting to do that. But again, we've run into the problem of getting people to help us put this on. So just putting the word out there, if anybody has any questions, they want to volunteer, they can talk to me or Hannah, anybody on the DEC. We're looking at doing a door hanger that's going to talk about what the DEC is. And then on the backside, maybe have some calendar dates. That's pretty much it.
Great. Thank you for the impromptu Connie. So it sounds like, and any questions? For the DEC?
I actually got a question back for Parks and Rec that Bill made me think of. So can we jump backwards for a second?
Sure. That's all right. Thank you, Connie.
Sorry, I just got a quick question. Bill actually asked a good question is, can you give us a status on the one behind the library? I know that's really far behind schedule, like how far it is, why it's behind, how we find them for being behind. How are we holding them accountable? All these kinds of questions I'm, I'm keep getting.
And, and Mayor Lickie, I can't, that's a little bit probably above my pay grade. I do
I think to the promotion of counselor.
I I walk that regularly and obviously they're making good progress. That building looks phenomenal. And so, yeah, I think that would be more of a question you have to direct to staff. I wish I had that update, but.
Okay, Seth?
Can I put that in my city manager report?
Great. Yep, sounds good. Connie, library?
Hi. The library board has been, again, the library's been very busy. But what the board has been trying to focus on are just a few things. We're trying to find a garage where we can keep the mobile library. Right now it's in a, one of the storage places, but it's out in the open. So we're trying to figure out what we can do to make it safer and also protect it. We have a local artist that does large size puzzles. And we've purchased some of those for our senior citizens in the library. So we're promoting local business and also helping out our seniors that need big print. We've been talking about the mobile library and where we want it to go. Like the granges, the churches, the schools, we'll be working on a schedule for that. And we're going to be talking about a fee for using the new facility. We've got, we've been discussing the, the current fee for the floral room, but we're going to start discussing the new community building. And then I don't know if you've signed up to get the library reader that comes out every month. But if you haven't, you should. This has got all kinds of great stuff. Right now we have about 2,400 subscribers and it's a great way to get information out to people. And as usual, I just want to commend Michelle and her staff for meeting the needs of the community. They just, if, when you start looking at what they do, you'll understand, you know, what effort they put into serving the community. And also thank you to Councilman Paul Strobel for being our liaison and attending our meetings. Any questions?
Council Mickey. So I guess I'm a little confused because I thought the original intent for the building was to be managed by the city, not the library, from what I, I've heard from earlier, earlier discussions way back in the day. So is it a library building or is it a city building?
That's a trick question because the library and city are, are the same. So the city owns the building, but it will be managed and run and programmed and rented by the, by the library staff. They will be managing that. Yes.
All right. What kind of fee do you think you guys might be charging? Because I think the people of Estacada put millions of dollars out already. So I'm kind of curious.
Yeah, we're, we're really kind of trying to figure out what to do. I think right now, gosh, I'm not even sure what they charge for the, the floral room. The, the big concern is people that won't clean up their mess. And then we've got to have library staff either clean it up or hire the, the cleaning staff to do an extra chore, chore over there. We're trying to make the guidelines pretty tight so people know exactly what they need to pay and what they're going to get for it.
Just an idea, like I said, people already put out, but $3 million for the whole project over there, something like that, two and a half. So what about if there's a deposit that's fully refundable without a fee?
We talked about that.
That's something to suggest because I know that, like I said, the people have been patient. Put a lot of money out for it. There's a lot of, a lot of donations into it. I think it's something that the people should be at least able to use for free. Without having to pay and let, I mean, a deposit's understandable or hold a credit card or something for damages. I get that. But you know, that's a, that's a thought to it. So.
Good. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Next we have the Arts Commission.
Oh, sorry. Nope. Nobody here from the Arts Commission.
Okay, we will move on to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee.
Hi, I'm here. I will start by thanking y'all for the opportunity to share the work that we're doing. And to Elena and Councilor Ten Bush for your continuing support of the work we, we have on our plate. This last quarter, we were really busy with turnover. We had, I believe, four positions that we filled. So that took up a lot of our time. And now we're getting all of these new members up to speed, which is great. During the last quarter, we attended the Ant Farm Open House and the TSP Community Workshop. And our focus for the next quarter is definitely building out our outreach strategy. So talking about ways to engage with youth, church and community groups so that we can find out what issues are really most important to everyone. We are also going to be collaborating with other city committees. We will share and continue to refine the Equity Lens tool. And we also want to work on increasing access to participation in city opportunities. And that's all.
Great. Thank you, Erin. Any questions for Erin? All right, wonderful. Thanks for the report, Erin.
Thank you.
And that brings us to the Traffic and Public Safety Committee. Jim, welcome.
Yes, thank you, Councilor. Saving the best for last. I appreciate that. All right, tomorrow night we'll have our, Jim Moriarty, Chair of Traffic Public Safety here with Vice Chair Brandy and also Carrie on the committee. We're going to be having our fourth meeting. Pretty, pretty much going at lightning speed here. Getting our committee goals already set for 2023. We're looking at taking another field trip. Don't know where yet. But that will be determined possibly tomorrow. We're doing some research and reviewing the 12 impact studies of the new developments here in Estacada. We have already approved our bylaws and policies for Traffic Public Safety Committee. And let's see, lastly, we would like to have a city Facebook page to join social media representing the city of Estacada. That's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you, Councilor Lickie. Actually, this one's for city staff. As you guys, I know that they requested it back in the previous meeting. When will they be getting their Facebook page?
It is on the list. Thanks for the reminder. Also, I have to, I just need to get it set up. I believe that we have space for one. All of the city social media pages have to be archived. I just need to get it set up. I believe that we have space for one. All of the city um, social media pages have to be archived. And we have a, a company that does that, but I believe that we have one, we have at least one space that's not being used that we could put that into. So I just need to get that set up for them as the staff that uh, helps out that committee.
Yeah, the, I know that's uh, one of the biggest things in people's minds in the city are here about the most is the safety and definitely traffic. I mean, you saw it happen with Main Street. So um, is there a way we can get that bumped up a little bit on the list to get that out there? So we can get that communication going, get people's feedback?
I think after, I, I can't give you a date for certain, but I think that probably after this week, it should um, we should be able to get that worked on.
Thanks, you guys. Appreciate it.
And I just wanted to add, I appreciate the staff for putting up all the photographs from our Main Street markup. And uh, just look forward to uh, uh, getting, getting everything out there. I've had some people reach out on some concerns. I just not, I don't have all the answers yet on in regards to school buses and a couple of the things going on, but we're going to speak to Chief, Chief Mendoza tomorrow at our meeting. So, but we'll, we'll get back to you on those. Okay?
Great.
Any other questions? And thank you for Council McElroy for attending as our liaison. Appreciate your insight.
Super. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
And thanks to, to all our committee members and leaders as well too. Um, and, and I, I would encourage anyone to go out, the city, these, their, their meetings are recorded. You can go out, the Public Safety Committee, I know you guys will meet tomorrow. And I think in, by the next day, the recording will be up on the city's YouTube site as well too. So I just encourage people, if you can't attend the meetings, go out and watch them. They, they do a really good job of getting these things turned around and, and uh, out there for us all to see. So thank you. Do we have any report outs from council members?
No, I just want to say something about, um, so um, as I believe Connie said earlier, uh, there are still some openings for city commissions and uh, committees. So uh, anybody interested in joining another city commissioner committee or joining their first city commissioner committee, um, please apply. Um, you know, get involved. Uh, the more, you know, the more, the more, more of the community, we can get involved in our committees and commissions, the, the, the better our community will be. So um, just get involved, apply.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, we will turn it over to our city manager for the city manager report.
Okay, just a couple of things to share this evening. Um, one kind of on the fly and the other one that I was planning for. Um, I wanted to let you know that there's a, staff has been planning a committee summit that all of our committees and commissions and boards are invited to. It will be February eleventh. I believe it starts at nine thirty here at City Hall with some coffee and donuts. And it's a time for the committees to get to get, not every, not each member of the committee has to come. Um, but everybody's welcome and each committee will have a chance to share the things they're working on and they can um, become more familiar with what each other is doing in addition to what, you know, was shared tonight. And then see if there's any opportunities for collaboration in the future. As I know, each committee is gearing up for their work plan um, for the year. And that will be brought to council. I think it's that in April, you'll be hearing each work plan. Um, that has been developed and would like, they'd like to request approval from council at that time. So um, that's going to take place February eleventh. Counselors are definitely invited to attend if they want to sit in. Um, just, it's nine thirty to noon on February eleventh here at City Hall. And so you're welcome to join if you, if you want to.
Is the primary target for that, the committee members and counselors or is this something public?
The primary target is city committees. And historically, we have done a nonprofit city summit that um, we've, where we've worked to invite all of the nonprofits, which it's always amazing to see that group of people gather. Um, there are so many people doing great work in their nonprofit organizations in the community. Um, this one is specifically geared toward the city committees and commissions right now. We want to do a full-blown nonprofit summit. We can also do that later on, um, because that's always helpful. Every, you know, so much collaboration that can happen and um, all that. So, yeah. Thank you. And then the other thing that I wanted to share um, is about Wade Creek Park Three. Um, we are obviously behind schedule. It was supposed to be done last summer and we are, um, I think running into a lot of the typical things that are happening right now with uh, getting supplies and um, some of, some staffing, we're having the slowdown on the landscape side of things. Uh, but we're meeting, we meet every two weeks as a project team. Um, get an update on what's going on. Right now there's, you know, we're getting down to the end where there's a few issues that have to be taken care of. Siding might be, haven't seen a little bit of um, like warping in some of the boards. And those are kind of the details that we don't want to miss by rushing through things. But um, I believe that this past week P G E did get their power turned on, which is a great thing. Um, and so it is moving forward. It's just moving much slower. We do have in the contract um, that there are penalties for missing the deadline. There's, I think, justifiable reasons for uh, a certain amount of delay that took place. There were um, that dredging of the pond was um, it took uh, three or four weeks extra to um, get that. There was a lot more underneath the water than was anticipated. Um, and so it is moving forward. We'll hopefully um, have, I wanted in the fall to have the grand opening. It looks like it'll be nice weather again by the time we have the grand opening later in the spring. Um, and we'll make sure people get invited to that. And we'll be, the library will be managing the use of the uh, community room there. And there will be a lot of free community events that happen there, um, whether they're, it's programmed through the library or through other committees, you know, that are commissions that might be wanting to do something there. The fees we're talking about are for private events. Um, and typically I'm, the fee so far, what they've been charging like for the floral room is extremely low. Um, but it does, they are private events. There are a lot of parties or exercise classes. Um, if it's a, if it's something where they're charging admission, like maybe a class, then it, the fee goes up. Um, so there's a lot of different uses for that room, but um, it's, I, I know that the library board will be very thoughtful about that. It is meant for the community. It's meant to be used and um, they just want to make sure that everybody has good access to that. I am taking, on Thursday, I'm taking the Estacada Community Foundation on a little tour because they have been anxiously awaiting. They are, were big supporters of the um, the construction of the building. And so um, as they have graciously extended our grant multiple times now, um, I suggested that we go and take a little tour. So I'm hoping the weather stays good. Any questions?
What uh, what time are you guys touring the facility on Thursday?
I think it's at ten o'clock. Yeah, I think it's at ten.
So what was the original deadline for the?
Yeah, June. It was, it was supposed to be complete in June.
Okay, so we're what, eight months now passed? So um, I, I don't know if you can send to me specifically or if we can schedule a executive session to discuss. I don't think it should be discussed openly, but there, I believe eight months is quite excessive. And if we have provisions in there, maybe you have Peter available to discuss that, because I believe heavily that we need to hold them accountable on behalf of the people that's located. Because if you were building a house and your contractor is eight months behind, I'm sure you would want something done about that. And I think it's part of our responsibility to at least have a discussion and whether it comes out in the end or not, would we end up exercising our, those fees or not? I think it's at least having a discussion is where we at least owe the people, Estacada, that much.
I, I think it's still at a staff level because we haven't run into a situation where it would rise to a council level, but I could, um, we'll check with.
I'm requesting it to rise to a council level. Because I, at this point, we're here on behalf of the people. And we work for the people and I think.
I'm not sure what we'd be discussing. Is there other?
I want to see what it is in there. Why are they saying that they're specifically late? And I would like for them to show up and talk to us.
Well, I could, I could arrange for them to come and give a report.
Yeah, and then I want to discuss this. We should, as a council, should be directing you guys to push those fees. I think that's, I think it's risen to the level, it's eight months. I think it's living to the, risen to the level that the, the council should be involved at this point.
I can check out into that.
Am I wrong? I mean, we have five of us here.
We do have, we do.
And obviously you have people out there that are excited about the idea. And that's not the first person who's asked me about it and said, why is the council not pushing this? Why are they not being fined? Why is it taking eight months? And so I'm, it's gotten to the point, I need, I've been patient about it myself. And now I'm saying something about it. And so am I, am I wrong? I mean.
I, I, I've, I've heard a couple of questions, but I've not heard anything about why is the council not doing anything about it? I, I guess to me, if, if our city manager is seeing it's still at the staff level, um, uh, just my two cents, I, I feel like I'm fine with the staff level. Um, but you're getting the sense of urgency from the council here as well too. And, and I think we need to know when it's no longer at a staff level. Uh, what's that trigger that would become a council level? And, and I, I mean, we're open to discussion here. Any other thoughts?
Well, I, I would like to know what the, you know, what the, you know, what, what has cost them eight months? I would like to know, you know, I would like a report on that, whether it's during a council meeting or, you know, however it's done, but uh, you know, I, I, I trust staff at this point, you know, if it's at a staff level, then staff level, but, and I haven't heard anything from the community, why we're not getting involved, so.
Council McElroy.
I'd be interested in hearing a summary of, of what the delays were. Do, do they have an expected completion date?
I do not have an expected completion date at this point. Um, where we're at right now is the building is nearly complete. Um, they'll be installing the um, fixtures. Um, the landscape still needs to be done around the building. And then we also have, like I mentioned, the siding. I'm not sure there's an issue with the siding. And so that might be, that's something we want to definitely get wrapped up and not rush through.
I think it'd be helpful to get a summary of what work is left to be done. And them to give estimated timelines for completion of those items. And it might give people some peace of mind knowing that in this close, if, if they can't give an estimated completion date and they're saying sometime in the spring, I think that's going to be not as well, won't, won't serve the people of Estacada as well.
Okay. I could follow up on that.
All right. Great. Thank you. Thank you. Anything else then from the city manager?
No, that's it.
All right. Super. Thank you. That brings us to council business here. First item up is Resolution two zero two-two dash zero zero three, a resolution adopting revised C I P list and system development charge for the transportation system.
And this um, is pretty well light, laid out in the staff report and the letter from um, Kurt MacLeod. This is kind of a stopgap measure to go ahead and update, do an interim update to the um, S D Cs for transportation, because once the transportation system plan update is completed, though at the, and adopted at the end of the year, there'll be another, a more full and complete update. But because there's been um, there's been development that's approved with conditions of approval, including these like Kern Creek Bridge Crossing, dedicated turn lanes at the intersection of Main Street and Sixth and signalization of River Mill and Eagle Creek Road, meaning putting a traffic signal there. Um, our city engineer recommended going ahead and getting those projects into the um, the capital improvement plan right now. And then going back in the transportation consultants will, um, and Taylor's group will work on doing a more thorough update later in the year, but we didn't want to wait the way things are going. So we're just looking to adopt this resolution. Um, no, there's recommended language for that motion. Are there any questions?
Council Licky.
Um, that's specifically to this one. It's, but on the relay on that. So after we go on this one, can we, before we move on, can we raise a question about that?
On which one?
Um, this, this has to do with the, the S D Cs. I, I posed a question to you during our, our Friday call. That's a deal with the um, S D Cs regarding um, the water.
Waste water.
Yeah. And can we start putting those in right away to start gathering funds from all the new houses in? So we get the new people moving in are paying for more of that than the people that are living here in the city of Estacada.
Right. And that is, so all, all the new houses are paying into that now. Um, and when I checked in with Kurt MacLeod, our city engineer, um, he said they should increase. They do need to increase, but they're not too far off. Um, the last in, the last update was October of twenty twenty-one and we'll be doing it again soon. The plan was to wait until um, the facilities plan was done, which was, that was, that was last, it was like a year ago that the facilities plan was done. Now that we're moving ahead and know, um, have a better first, you know, idea of where we're going. Um, we'll be up, we will be updating those because you're right, they do need to be updated. Um, the new improvements are spread over a larger area that benefits from them. So it doesn't impact each individual property as much, but um, he, that is something he'll be bringing back to.
Okay. Do we have a estimated timeline next? I know time's seven essence because we're getting houses built every day basically. So.
Yeah, I do not have a date on that. Um, but I can find out and, and send that. But I know that he is intending to do that soon.
Okay. That's what I had. Sorry. Okay. Thank you. Well, then, uh, any other questions on uh, Resolution two zero two-three zero zero three? All right.
Um, I moved to adopt Resolution two zero two-three dash zero zero three, a resolution adopting a revised C I P and system development charge for the transportation system.
All right, second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? All right, this passes.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone. And then that brings us to the contract for the wastewater treatment facility engineering.
Okay. And we're, I lost my staff report here, but in your packet and um, anybody who goes online can view the council packet um, as well. You'll see the agreement for engineering services with Kennedy Jenks for the the beginning stages is phase one of the um, wastewater treatment plant facility build. Um, and after reviewing their, their contract um, and their scope of work with the city engineer as well, um, we feel they've provided a very thorough and well-laid out plan in the scope of services. This will take us for about six months. Um, and will um, get us through the planning permitting, make sure that we're on the right track and everything is feasible for how we have it laid out. Um, and then they'll um, bring back another, this will end up with a, an engineering report. And if I, if there's any other comments, we do have a couple, our, our engineers here tonight, if they, if I'm saying something that you need to clarify, but um, this is phase one. We feel that it's the best way to do it because they're not, they're scoping out things that are very known right now. These are, this is what we need to do in the next six months. Then they'll come back with a design um, contract and scope of work. And at that point, the design will be known based on the work they've done. So they're not guessing on a scope. Um, and we feel that it'll give us a tighter contract and um, more specific outline of work. So we're confident about it. I also had um, our attorney take a look at their general conditions at the end of the contract. He felt it was um, sufficient and in good shape. So we're supporting it. And you know, are there any questions?
Council Licky.
Sorry, this is just so the, because I know it's a pretty hard number. It's about what? Three quarters of a million dollars? I, I'm trying to look at the exact numbers, but just to make sure, I did ask that you go and check some of the local projects that have happened recently. And we are in line with, that's what when people look at the price on there. And they say it's three quarters of a million dollars. And I think then that's phase one, phase two is estimated somewhere around one point five ish.
It's probably.
Yeah, they're checking their address roughly. So that's basically, that's in line with what other cities and things have paid. We did do the research. I just want to make sure you put that on record that we've gone through those. Um, Estacada was, I mean, it's good. Malalo is what, about three, you said?
They're um, they're running at about twelve percent of their project for engineering. And so their engineering costs are um, just over four point two million for their facility. Yeah.
Okay. So, and that's just for the engineering portion. So I just want to make sure the people of Estacada knew we did that due diligence and checking that. And that those are the numbers. So.
Yep. Exactly.
Um, and then uh, within this, it talked about uh, a loan as well too coming through and uh, could you just touch on that?
So we do, we have a loan that the city has um, been approved through D E Q. It's the um, Clean Water, Clean Water Services State Result, State Revolving Fund. I think that's Clean Water State Revolving Fund. Um, and they've loaned, they've, the amount of the loan right now is three point five million. We don't have to use that much, but it's available. And then as we move towards construction, they will expand that into the construction part. And they have um, the reason we're doing it this way is we're locked in at an interest rate. We have the money to do the engineering. But as more the rules come out around um, the bipartisan infrastructure law and the um, any other infrastructure money that is supposedly floating around out there that um, seems to be a little bit elusive right now. They'll have more rules built around that at the state level and, and we could potentially get some forgivable loans or grants. Now, we're also reaching out, reaching out to our legislators to, to um, make sure that we are foremost in their minds as um, they're recommending funding. So um, um, they're recommending funding, so, um, that's the loan that we'll be covering this.
All right, great, thank you. Council McRae.
And half of this is forgivable as well, right?
Um, actually.
The preliminary part of the loan, the three million.
It's, it's up to half, but it's, it's half a million dollars or half of the project, whichever is less. So, so at this point, half a million dollars is all that is forgivable of our, it's going to be three something million dollars with the engineering. Um, and that's, that includes, I mean, when they add on the amount for construction, that five hundred thousand dollars doesn't go up. So really, it's almost nothing on the size of a project, which is why we're working very hard to get some more, um, grants or forgivable loans.
Council Nikki. Yeah, and just to be clear, if the numbers are out there, the, the whole project is estimated around twenty five million dollars.
Correct.
And so, and that's over the course of a couple of years, originally funded by a loan, hopefully through the EPA and all the, DEQ.
DEQ right now, we're, we're not.
Yeah, I'm saying DEQ, and then, but we're going to continue to, over the course of that time, to try to find so that we, we may have the loan, but to avoid impact directly on the people of Estacada, we're going to try to get grants, um, forgivable loans and things, pay that back and bring it down, so that the remainder amount is, and that's, we're looking, I think we originally discussed like a forty year term to pay back or something like that, was it?
I believe it is forty, I can't remember off the top of my head, but.
Somewhere like that.
It's thirty or forty.
Reduce the impact to the people.
Could be thirty, thirty or forty, yeah.
I just want people, when they hear these numbers, I know if I didn't have that information, I'd be a little worried, so I'm trying to lay that out there.
Mm-hmm.
And so I think it's kind of important.
And it is good to note, too, um, that, you know, growth puts pressure on us to move faster, but the plant that we currently have does not meet the requirements that DEQ continues to, um, increase the requirements, and it's, it's critically important that the water that we treat and put back in the Clackamas River is the highest quality. And so, and the plant that we have right now was built in the sixties and upgraded in the eighties, it just does not meet those standards. Um, and so we would have to be doing a, a plant anyway, and, um, so having a, a slightly larger or significantly larger population to spread that over makes it a lighter lift for each individual household and business.
I'm sorry, I, I think it's important to clarify this. So you said it's not meeting the standards. Can you clarify that more? Because I know once one hears that, they're going to say, why are we proving more houses? Because, or can we, is it to the point?
It's not that, it's not that we're over capacity, it's that the DEQ continues to add on, like for instance, our ammonia um, plant that we put in a few years ago, that, the plant that was built was never designed to take out ammonia. But now we're required to take that out. So we built this other plant alongside, that the water trickles through, um, to take out ammonia. It doesn't do as good a job as it needs to do. And so we struggle every summer, it's, it's, um, regulated through the summer months. And that is, we struggle every summer to meet those limits. And if we don't make changes to the processes, it's not the capacity at this, we still have capacity, but the processes also are, are causing us issues where we're going to start getting more, um, be in a situation where DEQ will have to, um, you know, put out their regulatory.
How, are we under those numbers now? Are we meeting those numbers now? Where are we at with those?
Which, which numbers?
For ammonia, whatever their requirements are.
We meet them for part of the season. And the plant that we have, it does not do a great job of meeting those requirements. Um, it, it meets them when the weather is good, when the weather's warm. And then it, and then we struggle to meet them. And so we're going to be entering a, a MAO, which is a mutual agreement in order with DEQ. And that will, um, uh, help to make sure we're not getting fines, as long as we keep moving forward with the, with the plans that we have to improve the plant by building this new one.
Um, how does our growth in the houses we have coming in affect those levels now? Well, is it going to push us further, uh, out of regulation, uh, meeting those requirements?
I wouldn't, I, you know, that's probably an engineering question for Kurt MacLeod. However, it's, it's not necessarily the capacity of it, it's the, it's the function of that, the plant that we have.
So, you know, so what I've heard a few times from you, it's not the capacity, that's not the issue here.
Right, we are, we are going to reach capacity at some point, but right now, it's the, it's, um, we're planning ahead, we're on a good path. And so I don't want people to worry. I know people do worry, and I appreciate that there. I know they're concerned about that the city meets the requirements that we are held to, and also we want to be environmental good stewards, too. And so I know it's concerning to them, um, and we are heading towards that, where, you know, if we didn't do anything, we would go, we would meet, hit capacity. But right now, it's also the processes that are, need to change.
Just to clarify, and could you, I'd like to see this in writing from Kurt, that higher capacity doesn't change what those numbers are going to be, the process won't matter how much is running through there.
For ammonia.
It's just a process. I mean, we have some engineers here. Is, you mind if we, can we ask you that question? Would you be unanswering that? Is that?
I don't know how familiar you are with the, how our plant operates, but.
My, my concern is just continuing to move forward, adding more houses to the bill. When we already are, we have twelve hundred houses, and right now, we're already having trouble during parts of the season. You can see where my concern is going.
Yeah, I see, I see what you're.
We have years until we get this thing built, two years at best, if everything falls into place and angels fall from heaven. But if, but it, but if, but that, the cases, I mean, in two years, we're going to have at least six, eight hundred more homes on an area we're already not meeting. So I'd really like to have our engineer try to lay this particular piece out for us, so I can feel like I'm fully informed, and that the people of Estacada are more informed of how will these houses that are already approved, for example, impact plus new houses coming in? Plus, how far out are we going to be? I know we have things with the, the EQ, I really want to know that information.
I think we're, I think we're moving more towards, you're asking me a land use question, though, versus, um, what we're trying to do here is to approve this contract.
But I think you've got, I think you've got the point.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I think this is information that we're looking forward to hearing from, from Kurt as well, too. But yes, back, back to what we're looking at today. Um, I, I do have a question, you guys came out, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Definitely appreciate that. Uh, once this is, is approved by council, um, what kind of timeline, when, when would this, will you guys start? What kind of timeline would you guys be looking at, or your company? All right, great, thank you. A, and any other questions for representatives here?
What's one of the biggest challenges you see with the project that's an unknown? I know we broke, we compartmentalized this and the.
And could you step up to the mic?
Sorry, we compartmentalized this so that we could limit the unknowns in the process. I just, this first phase, what's the the biggest unknown that you guys have to deal with?
Some of the biggest unknowns, I think at this point, are, um, land acquisitions, so we've there's a pretty direct route to the treatment plant, future treatment plant site. You know, we have to work with a lot of private property owners potentially in some scenarios throughout that sewer main. Uh, in the most direct path, it's going to save the city the most money. So there's that, is a, a challenge. Ensuring that we can relocate the outfall will be another challenge. Right now, the plant outfall is behind the River Mill Dam. Um, DQ would like to see it downstream with a multi-port diffuser, most likely, um, in a stretch of the river with higher velocities. They've agreed, at least in Kurt's discussions with them, that it is a relocation, should be easy to permit. You know, we need to vet that. We have an expert on board that specializes in doing like a mixing zone study. And this is pretty, pretty sciency stuff, but a mixing zone and zone of initial dilution needs to be established for that reach of the river that we're talking about moving the outfall to. So those are a couple of the challenges, um, along with a schedule that you kind of already alluded to.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions then? All right.
Okay, in the, um, staff report, there is a recommended language for the motion.
I got that pulled up here, I can, I've got it pulled up.
Okay, perfect.
Um, I moved to approve the engineering contract for Kennedy Jenks to perform the scope of services on a time and materials basis, not to exceed in the amount of seven hundred twenty-six thousand two hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Do you have a second?
I happily still.
Second.
And then any discussion then?
No, I'd say I happily second.
Great, uh, uh, all in favor?
I.
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 Opposed? All right, the eyes have it. We look forward to working with you guys, thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Thanks, Sean.
Thanks, you guys, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for answering those questions.
Yeah, I really appreciate that.
All right, super, that concludes council business and brings us to citizen and community group comments. I do not have any, uh, forums now. Anyone online that you see? No hands, okay. Then we will get to the, uh, mayor and council reports and comments. Uh, Council Hughes, we will start with you.
Yeah, hi, thanks. And, uh, thanks, Councilor Strobel, for stepping in. A little hard for me to run a meeting via Zoom while I'm out of state, and I apologize for not being there, but we've had this trip planned for quite some time. Um, with that said, I also want to thank, uh, Brett Dodrell for his years of service to the community as a pastor, as a former mayor, as, um, you know, Parks and Rec, Chamber of Commerce, I mean, he's just had his hands in this community, and I know he's got a heart for it, and I just want to thank him so much for his service, and here's a dedication to the Estacada community. Um, thank you guys for a great meeting. Again, I apologize for not being there in person. And, um, thank you, staff, for, uh, reaching out, Melanie, and, um, going over some of my questions. And I look forward to seeing you guys this weekend on Sunday. That's it.
All right, thank you. Council Ten Bush.
Um, first off, I want to apologize for being late to the workshop. I completely forgot about that, and I do apologize for that. I typically don't miss meetings, and, uh, it's not like me, so, uh, I apologize. Uh, thanks, staff, for all your hard work. This was, uh, a good packet. I had no questions this week, I, at least for staff. Um, I really appreciate, and thank you, Melanie, for reaching out to me. Um, and thank you guys for, you know, all your hard work, and, uh, thank you guys for showing up and being involved in these communities. It's really, um, it seems like the last, uh, this last year, keeping people on the committees, I don't know what the issue is, but keeping people on the committees, committees was an issue. Um, but we had some really great applicants come, come in, and, uh, um, I appreciate the city, the, the community for stepping up, and I'd just like to see more of that, because there are still openings. And then again, in March, we have our, uh, um, terms, the terms end, and I'd like to see some new faces, new applicants, uh, um, you know, from the community step up and, uh, apply for these, it'd be really nice. Although I do like seeing the old faces, too, so, uh, thank you, guys, thanks again.
Council Proco.
I'd like to thank city staff. Um, Melanie, you've been great answering all my little questions that I've had. Um, I guess the only things I want to say is that, uh, Mary Poppins is showing, uh, this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, I believe, at the middle school. And the Arts Commission is holding an open mic night at Ant Farm on Thursday, so I hope that we can see people there. Thanks.
Awesome, thanks. Council Nikki.
Um, first of all, uh, thanks, you guys, for putting up with, uh, me, then I had a lot of questions and kind of caught me off guard a little bit with the, uh, with some of the, uh, sewer plant stuff, so that's kind of what I was drilling into that a little bit, uh. So I hope I wasn't drilling too hard, but, uh, I'm really curious to know about that. Um, and, uh, thanks for the, this council here for putting up with a lot of my questions tonight, a lot of them tonight. Um, and I look forward to what we have coming this year. Um, stuff that traffic and public safety is already jumping on, has really had a lot of impact on people in the city. Um, and, uh, how's the weather out there, Mel, uh, out there at Charity? I hope it's, hope it's good, so.
It is, um, let's see, I think it's eighteen degrees.
I don't think you're sitting outside, so I wasn't, I wasn't sure.
No, I'm, I'm indoors, yeah.
All right, that's all I had. Thanks, guys, have a good night.
Thanks.
Just want to thank everybody for coming out, appreciate you guys and everyone that's participated on the committees, and thank you, Melanie, and the rest of the staff that's always available to answer questions, appreciate you guys. And, uh, looking forward to working with all of you. It's been, been kind of a different situation in the meetings the last couple, and it's been nice, nice change.
All right, thanks. I just want to close by, uh, uh, as well thanking folks for coming out and participating, and staff for getting us ready. You do such a great job with that, and um, great discussion tonight. Thanks, everyone, for, for being involved in this. And then we just wish, uh, we hope to see Mayor Drinkwine back in a couple of weeks as well, too, hopefully on Sunday. And just reminder, we are running from what, eleven to four thirty or five, is that right?
Yes, eleven, if you show up ten thirty-ish or between ten thirty and eleven, we'll have some morning snacks here, but we'll get rolling right at eleven.
I guess I should ask, is that a public meeting, or is that just a closed meeting?
It's a public meeting. Um, and so, uh, guests are welcome to, the public is welcome to attend and listen in. Um, it'll be kind of a long day, but we'll also be, um, having the Zoom running. Um, so that people can listen in if they want to. It is open meeting.
All right, great. Thanks, look forward to seeing everyone there, and with that, the meeting is adjourned.